Okay, I call this school board work session, regular meeting Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, 7:00 PM to order. Ms. Robach, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Birdnick. Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Present.
Mr. Goddickson.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Panofsky.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Can y'all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of our beloved President.
Okay, announcements. We had an executive session for 30 minutes for personnel reasons. And, Mr. Panofsky?
I have two things. First off, it was kind of brought up at our last meeting, the idea of charter school funding reform. There seems to be finally a push in our state legislature, a bipartisan push, to allow some meaningful charter school reform. On the homepage, if you go to CentennialSD.org, you will see a link you can click that will show you how to reach out to your legislators to ask them to support charter school reform. It's real easy. You don't even need to know who your legislators are. You just type in your information and it sends the message. I urge everyone to do that. I've put it out over Facebook and Twitter also. And my second thing is, we do have a student who is here tonight with us from Tenet, and we have, if there is no board member who has an objection to letting her speak before we get into the presentation section, that way we'll just move the public comments up a little bit so that we can let her speak first.
Okay, so we're gonna move community comments now. Is everybody okay? Mr. Miller?
No problem with that. I just wanted to add one other thing to announcements. I believe we had a historic moment over the weekend where, for the first time, black and white night was held virtually, and both teams won.
Fantastic. It was a good turnout.
Yeah.
Okay, community comments for Sarah?
Hello, my name is Sarah Lieb, and I'm a senior at William Tenet. I appreciate you taking the time to listen. I have dealt with multiple schedule changes throughout my four years here. Ninth grade, we had six periods a day. Tenth and eleventh grade was the year we had eight periods over the course of two days, 90-minute class periods. When COVID hit last year, we were given work to do on our own time. Then, the beginning of this year, we started with two live periods, two flex periods, lunch, two live periods and two flex periods, four days a week, with Wednesdays as a day to catch up and do work on your own time. When we started doing hybrid, we did 90 minutes once again. Hybrid ended, and every class was split into half-live and half-flex. As you can imagine, this year has been hard on everyone. Mental health has gone down, motivation has gone down, jobs have been lost, special events have been canceled. Everyone's truly struggling with something right now. School's one of the hardest things for most, though. Doing work seems pointless, trying to keep up seems impossible. We are mentally drained for staring at a screen for seven hours straight. Paying attention seems impossible even with all distractions put away. Wednesdays were a good thing for everyone. Teachers had the ability to plan for future classes. Students had the time to meet with teachers on a Google Meet when they needed extra help with assignments. It was especially good for students who get anxious talking in front of a class. Students who needed to work to support family members would work all day on Wednesdays. Students whose parents worked during the days had to take care of their younger siblings on Wednesdays. Students and teachers used that day to do work but also could attend to other priorities without missing any new work. Students who were stressed or behind with work used that day to catch up on missing assignments. Teachers used that day to grade, and janitors used that day to clean everything extra well to keep us safe. We all understand that we want to go back to normal as quickly as we can, but I think Wednesdays was a positive thing that we gained from the pandemic. And most students and teachers loved it and got use from it. Another reason is, as I mentioned above, with the schedule changes. We have changed the schedule multiple times this year, and Wednesdays were kept throughout the year and have always had a positive impact. I know office hours were brought back in replace of Wednesdays. Office hours take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays anywhere between 20 and 30 minutes, whereas Wednesdays we had as much time as we needed to meet with the teacher. I don't know if it was brought to your attention, but a petition was made to keep Wednesdays as-is. I created it knowing I'm just one voice but hoping many others would come. Currently, as over 800 signatures, as well as many comments from students that attend here stating why they feel Wednesdays should be kept. Yet again, thank you for your time.
First of all, thank you. That was very well spoken.
Thank you.
When the idea of the alternating Wednesdays first came up, I actually raised concerns. My concerns were a little different, but I did have concerns with it. I'm hearing you, I'm hearing what you're saying loud and clear, and I'm hearing concerns from a lot of other people that are saying the same thing. I, I think that the idea of the alternating Wednesdays was to give students more time in person, in the classroom. And I think, you know, we do things, and sometimes they work wonderfully, and sometimes they don't. And I'm just speaking from the perspective here, and this is not anything about any employee in this district. What I'm hearing is it's not working. So, I don't know if there, what we can do to kind of revisit that, because I had originally heard it from sort of some staffing concerns, but now I'm also hearing it from students that it's kind of confusing and not having, I think, the effect that we wanted to. And I think, you know, we did it with, our intentions were pure. We approved it with pure intentions to try to give you guys, because what we're hearing is that we were hearing before, there's not enough time face-to-face in the classroom. But maybe, you know, we can find a different way.
Mr. Dixon?
I just, can I, I would ask a question of clarification. You're talking about Wednesdays for the rest of this academic year?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brancato?
So Sarah, when you say office hours, they're on Tuesdays and Thursdays, aren't most kids, the kids, should I say it this way? So those office hours, some people are still on the bus on their way home, correct?
Correct.
And it's only 20 to 40 minutes, so by the time school ends, some of those kids can't even participate in office hours unless they call from the bus?
Yeah, that is true.
So are a lot of kids saying that, or a few kids saying that?
I-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I mean, like, in the past, I've always used office hours when I needed to make up work, but, you know, some kids are virtual and some kids are hybrid, so that's hard for the hybrid kids, because they have to go home.
Right.
And to my knowledge, we have to leave the school after 2:20, and we can't stay after. So, most kids do have to leave, and I know for me, I live five minutes away from Tenet, but it takes me about 15 minutes to get home. By the time I'm home, it's 12:40, or 2:40.
Right, so one, one young lady sent me an email, and she told me that she had to partake in office hours while she was driving. And that just made me crazy.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you letting me know. I, I thank you. And thank you very much for coming and speaking up for everybody.
Absolutely.
That, that takes, that takes a lot. That's, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Sarah, very well organized and very impressive, and I do appreciate hearing your words. Although, I'm really answering Mr. Panofsky at this point, just again, as your opinion was yours, mine is that we do have a process that we follow in the district, and we, we take guidance from the administration as to what they hear overall and observe. So, I, I would look for administration to tell us if they feel there's a change in plan warranted, and whatever reasoning's behind it, whether it's coming from our professional staff, whether Sarah does really have 800 people that are in the district, you know, I, I don't put a lot, I appreciate everything that you did, but I don't follow unsigned surveys or things like that. I want to hear what feedback we get from inside our own organization that's credible. So, you know, unless I were to hear something different from administration, I, I think we, we need to follow the logic that led us to make this decision in the first place.
Can I ask, the petition you, you started, is it through what website?
It's through Change.org.
And so people give their names, right?
Uh, correct, yes.
So, so, so we can access the petition, there, anybody who signs it would have their names and their hometowns on it. Now, you are correct, we can't prove that their hometown is what they say it is, but it's, it's not, I wouldn't say it's exactly the same as unsigned letter, because there is going to be a list of names attached, and I, I'm interested. I also agree. I would like to hear from administration about the Wednesdays and see what they're, you know, what they're hearing, if it's different, because what I, I'm hearing is what Sarah is telling us personally. That, again, that's just me.
Mrs. Brancato?
So, so Sarah, I got, somebody sent the petition to me. So it's not unsigned. Those are real names on there, with real signatures, so they're not 800 ghost people. I mean, it says right here, we can read, it says 800 signatures. And it, and the child has said, young lady, I'm sorry, has said, has said 800 signatures. So it's not, it's not irrelevant. And I'm concerned that kids who need office hours, which, let's be honest, we all need office hours, because this, this is a crazy COVID world. And if they can't partake in office hours, when are they supposed to get that extra help? And are we supposed to expect our teachers to have office hours at 5:00 on a weekend, or whenever these kids can fit it in?
Mr. Martin?
I just have one question. Have we given up hope of doing what we should be doing and going to school five days a week for every grade level, like some other districts in this county are doing? Have we given up hope that that is not going to occur this school year?
No, we, we haven't given up hope. And I'm just gonna add lib to a couple comments, and Dr. Best can speak to the current status. Obviously, you know, we're following what the guidelines have come about the six feet and the masking for secondary students. Additionally, to Mr. Dixon's question, as of this today, we were informed, made aware that Dr. Fossey has said they don't expect vaccination for secondary students until the fall. So to your point about, we may be starting school year in this fashion unless there's a decision to say that we, we should do it less than six feet, to Mr. Martin's question. So you could very well start school in this fashion. So what we do today could very well carry over. One of the things that I reflected upon, and thank you, as I greeted you at the door, I told you, we're welcome to hear from you, so thank you. So anything that's said here does not take away from you voicing. We want this to happen and to hear your voice. One of the things that I reflect upon and ask the staff, what happened other times? And how do we engage students? Before the situation? Because buses still came. Students still had to leave. Students still had to go to work. So everything they mentioned still happened during a regular schedule. And I know that as a former high school principal. What they're describing isn't unique. Now, what she is describing is, we did something that helped, but as we transitioned back, and it was an intent that everyone kept saying, trying to get more face time with students, and it also has a concern that we are telling legislators who are arguing that in-person is the most important part of it. And each time we do something that takes away from that, we're killing our own argument for the importance of being in front of a teacher every day. It also hurts us when we talk about the cyber school issue, when we're saying that model doesn't work, if you think in-person is important. Because every time I'm on a legislative call, I bring that up. How do you fund cyber schools if you're telling us it's important to get them in person and use that against us to divert money from us? So those are some of the things that ran through my mind in trying to understand, you know, how do you find a way to create a win-win out of this situation? But Dr. Best is, you got to share information?
Yes, so the, the most important thing I think we all need to keep in mind is, this hasn't even happened yet. Tomorrow's the first Wednesday that we're, we're offering an additional day of hybrid instruction. So, a lot of what I'm hearing is assumption and supposition, it may or may not occur, but this, this arrangement that, you know, we're looking at as not being successful has not even started. So I think that's an important piece, number one. Number two, on the office hours end, remember, the kids are in a hybrid cohort model, which means that the days that they're in person, they aren't able to office, to access office hours virtually, because they are in transit or going out to play a sport or something along those lines. On the days that they're not in person, they are able to access office hours. And to Dr. Bedden's point, we have 90-minute blocks of instruction at the high school. There's plenty of time for teachers and students to interact, either in person or virtually. And the, the entire point of this expansion of in-person days was to follow our health and safety plan, follow the guidelines, and to add more in-person instruction for our students, because that's what we've heard from legislators, that's what we've heard from the departments, the various departments of health, who are advising us based on science, not just about physical health, but emotional and mental health as well. And I think that any plan can be shot before it's actually enacted, but I think it's way too early for us to start saying that this is not working or, or not a good arrangement.
Sarah?
I just want to say something real quick. I know from, I have a lot of friends who are in other school districts around here, and the thing that has always worked best for them is four days a week, where they got to keep their Wednesdays. Now, following off what you said, office hours and that kids, you know, kids that aren't hybrid certain days, who are virtual certain days can talk to students or teachers, but the thing is, they only have 20 minutes, 20 or 30 minutes. And students get anxiety. I have anxiety. I think a lot of students deal with it. And to speak in front of a class and say that they have a question about something and that they may feel stupid, that's what's the problem. This is why it's hard for students, I mean, like, anytime I get called on in a Google Meet, I get anxiety. I get really anxious. I don't want to say something dumb. And I think a lot of students feel that way. That's why office hours were such a great thing, and Wednesdays were such a great thing, because you could email your teacher and say, what time can we meet? I want to talk about something. I want to talk about an assignment. I want to make something up. And I was able to get help. I had a teacher stay on with me for like 30 minutes once, just to help.
I-
First off, Dr. Best, let me apologize. I have so many schedules in my head. I think I was conflating our schedule with Middle Buck's, where they have already started back. So, I, I do take back the, it's not working thing. I'm hearing, there's a lot of anxiety about it working, I guess is the comments that I'm hearing. I, I do believe Dr. Best is correct that we can't say something isn't working until we've seen how it's working. And so, definitely, if it isn't, if it, if, when we start back, and this is becoming the fact that it, if it clearly is not working, that is absolutely something I think we can all say we would look into. Also, on a personal note, you should really consider a career as a lawyer, because you make really good and persuasive arguments. So, very good.
Mr. Dixon?
And, and Sarah, I second everything everyone said. You're a very effective presenter, so thank you for coming. And I, I just, it's a question that I suppose this school year is moot, but I am thinking about next school year in terms of, because I assume this year such rules are suspended, but there are a certain number of instructional days, and I'm wondering how that plays into this, that we have to meet.
We work that in the calendar.
Well, right. But I mean, I'm thinking about, if this is a decision that we're to carry over to next year, that's a question, like, I don't know.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. So the, the days are 180, then there's 900 and 990. So in her case, the secondary is 990, that applies. And our schedule, depending on how many times we do something like this, you know, we have some flexibility, some wiggle room, but depending on how many times it happened, you could eat into it. So for instance, we put in more than hours, the minimum hours in, in our year. So without actually knowing how many times this would change, you know, we would have to, obviously, as our responsibility as administrators, we have to monitor that and make sure we comply. So we would never get, let it get to that situation for that to happen. But to your point about how we build a schedule, we build a schedule with intentions of being in compliance and also making sure that we are providing the best instructional model possible for success.
I mean, so my question basically is, suspending Wednesdays indefinitely, does that bear any-
Well, this, this year, no.
Right.
Because we have been, because of 520.1, which was basically a resolution most districts passed and turned in, we have a lot more flexibility with our scheduling process. 520.1 is expected to not be, 521.1 said, basically, during the pandemic and up to four years. Ironically, for another reason, I checked with a couple legal councils about what's the status of 520.1 after this year, and whether or not it has to be acted upon, because it said during the pandemic, up to four years. Basically, their comment is, don't depend on 520.1 to be there next year. So, everything that we do now is really about this year. If we, we have more flexibility this year because of the, the status of COVID and the pandemic when you did 520.1.
Mrs. Brancato?
So could we, so could we try out this Wednesday, could we do two Wednesdays, and after two Wednesdays, could we survey the students and the staff and get their feedback after two weeks? Could we do that?
You could, but I'm going to be transparent. You won't get a positive response, because they've already decided it won't work. Your 800 student response, or 800-person survey tells me they've already decided it's not a good thing.
Could we do it anyway? Because maybe I just believe in people a little more.
Again, I, I said at the beginning, you could do it. That, that's the first thing I said.
Sarah?
So I believe, I believe that people, if we're saying we're doing it anyway, and then after two weeks, we can say, can you give us your honest opinion? I don't, I don't think kids are just going to say, nah, hate it. If it started to work for them, I think kids will be honest.
Sorry about that. Sarah?
No, you're totally fine. I just wanted to say, I totally understand where you're coming from. Kids who've signed things, you know, kids seem like they're so certain about everything. I know a lot of kids are, we miss in-person time, and I think that all of us would love to try it. And I think that you asking to send out a survey means so much, because a lot of us just want to voice in some of these decisions and schedule changes that are happening and affecting us. And I know a lot of teachers that were really upset about the schedule change and felt like they didn't get a voice. And that's mainly, I think, the problem was, was we felt like we didn't have a voice, and we weren't able to talk about something that felt huge to us. So I think that if you sent out a survey, I think the students would be honest. And I know, like, I'm a student, I might be biased, and I, some kids might not be, because they're lazy, but I think a lot of students, sorry, I just called all of us out, but it's true. I think a lot of us miss in-person time, and a lot of us miss being in school and being with our friends. But, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Panofsky?
So, first off, I, I want to say that I absolutely understand where you're coming from, feeling like you don't have a voice. I do know that, that the, the educators in the district were part of the process, but I know that where you're coming from, it feels like you weren't, and that's, that's absolutely valid. I would urge any student who is listening to this to do what you did, to reach out. We're here. We have emails. We will talk to you. You know, we're not, we're not these distant people who only exist behind this board. We, you know, I read every email that comes to me. I, I try my best to get back to as many as possible, but seriously, like, do exactly what you did. And, because it's effective. And if, if you don't come to us and tell us you feel like you don't have a voice, then we don't know you feel like you don't have a voice. We can't do something about something we don't know about. So, thank you, yeah.
Madam President, I'd like to make a slight request, amendment to what was said, is you really should start with the high school principal. That's what she's paid for, to give her a chance to respond to the students. All actuality, jumping over that and not giving it, it defeats the whole purpose of having those people in place. Secondly, I would say that what you need to know is why I said what I said, Sarah, is that we got half our students who don't even come on their actual in-person day.
I-
So they've already decided they prefer the virtual version. That's why I'm saying that what I said, not to have anything against you, but all the data we're showing-
Oh, no, I, I believe you. Don't worry.
Is that they really don't. They like the virtual aspect of it. So we have, still have, even on in-person days, about half the students showing up. And that's why I was saying, between what was already done with the survey and also the information we're seeing, they prefer, as kids, not to come. They're choosing that option, which is what we gave them, which is fine. That was, we built a system that allowed that.
Mrs. Brancato?
And Dr. Bedden, if I, if I could just add, since we made the announcement of adding the expanded in-person instruction at the secondary level, all three buildings have had an uptick in students coming back for in-person learning. We saw the same phenomenon at the elementary schools when we went to the four-day model, which began this week, where we're at nearly 87% of our kids attending in person. So, in, in all six of our schools, when we've gone and offered more in-person instruction, more students have come. So I, I think there's a clear trend there that can't be ignored.
Mrs. Brancato?
So, so I'm, I'm lost now. Can we, can we do the survey, or we can't do the survey? Because I want them to have a voice. I'd like you to try it out first.
Oh, 1,000%.
You know, sometimes you gotta try it out and get used to it.
Yeah, I'm totally willing to do that.
You might get, you might be like, wow, more of my friends are coming back to school. And I know it's hard, because we've all been living crazy for so long. So maybe if we give it a try?
Oh, 1,000%.
But can we give a survey after a couple weeks and ask them their opinions? Because ultimately, it's not, it's not us going to school, it's them. And I don't believe that kids are all lazy. I know you didn't say all lazy. Listen, when I ask for the trash to go out, I don't get a lot of volunteers. But you high school kids, you, you, you know which way you want to go. And, and I think, I think 99.9% of you want, you want to be in school. So can we do the survey, or we can't do the survey?
Did anyone have any other questions? Are we good? So I'm gonna, we can reach out to Dr. Heinrich to have her take care of that, the survey and reaching out. And I said, I don't see a reason why we couldn't do that, but it would go through Dr. Heinrich.
And what other-
So can we see the results of the survey, or is that not something we can see?
I'm, I'm sure we absolutely can.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we'll reach out to Dr. Heinrich to, because it really should go through her to, you know, give it two weeks to see how it works, and then we'll send, have her send out a survey of some sort to, you know, to gauge what the kids are going through. Students are going through.
So just to share on that two-week timeline, that means everybody will have only done it one time.
Okay, so let's do it a little more than two weeks.
Maybe give it a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, so each, each-
Let's give it a month.
Each student will have a chance to do two Wednesdays then.
Yeah. And, and Dr. Heinrich will also be announcing later this week a whole series of senior cumulative events that we're going to be running this spring that have been planned with our student leadership group that's been meeting with our teachers and administration since September. So the students do have a voice at William Tenet High School, and it will be heard with the events they're going to announce.
Did anyone else have any comments? Thank you so much for coming out, Sarah. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
And any other community comments? I don't think there were.
Are there any other community comments?
Voice from above? No, he told me there weren't, so.
So we're going to go to student presentations for, actually, yeah, for Logan Merritts?
What, what one should I talk at?
Which one would you like to?
Um, this one seems a good height.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Logan Merritt, here to share the William Tenet Student Report. As we just discussed in that conversation, teachers and students are mentally preparing for our first hybrid Wednesday tomorrow. This past weekend, on Saturday, the Black and White Generals Caroline Weir, J.T. Stone, Jackie Kubala, and Mike Brokowski, along with staff leaders, ran the canned food drive event from 10 to 2. Both teams collected a generous amount of donations that would go to the Klinger Farmers Market, all while socially distancing. Students are now waiting to participate in the two other Black and White events, a 5K run and a clothing drive, which are coming soon. Student leaders, teachers, and staff have been working together to discuss how other popular events could be socially distanced. These main events include Powderpuff, which would be in the spring, senior prom, and senior graduation. Although these events are precarious, the student body remains grateful for the events we've had and hopeful for those we may experience. Spring sports have just begun, and teams are holding tryouts. Also, members of the debate team will be participating in the virtual state tournament later this month. The Science National Honor Society recently, recently created a virtual induction for new members. It consisted of a Google Slides presentation with a warm welcome from the officers and administrators, as well as an introductory slide for each new inductee. Seniors are currently building their applications for regional scholarships through Naviance, which will be due in early April. That is all. Thank you for listening to the Tenet Report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gabriel, Ms. Bolden?
Do we have Elizabeth on Zoom?
Oh, do we have another one? Is she on, is she on Zoom?
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, good. Hello.
Am I good to start?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Ponarenko. I'm a junior at William Tenet High School. I'm also a Level 200 in the Public Safety Program at Middle Buck's Institute of Technology. The current happenings of MBIT are national athletic- Uh, the current happenings of MBIT are, uh, National Athletic Training Month is recognized in March to spread awareness about the important work of athletic trainers. Athletic trainers are healthcare professionals who collab, collaborate with physicians to provide emergency care and prevent, diagnose, and treat injuries, as well as medical conditions for people in work, life, and play, including athletes, industrial workers, military service members, and public servants. The 2021 slogan is essential to healthcare. Our student and sports therapy and exercise management plan to recognize our essential workers by sending thank yous to our homeschool athletic trainers for all that they do. The state of Pennsylvania now has 11 new PA Emissions Inspector certified and ready to conduct emission testing. These automotive technology students completed the Pennsylvania Enhanced Emission Inspection Certification Course, which provides the theory of statewide emission inspection procedures and tests required for the PA Enhanced Emission Inspection Certification. This training is mandated by PennDOT for all inspectors and automotive repair technicians conducting emission inspections. Now they will start preparing for the PA Safety Instructor Exam. The Bucks County Community College Course Introduction to Entrepreneurship is underway at MBIT with seven students enrolled. The course teaches understanding of basic entrepreneurial concepts, gaining experience with useful tools, and developing entrepreneurial skills through hands-on learning. Students in our Horticulture, Landscape, and Design Program are working on pond installations this month that will help utilize their on, aquaponics systems to implement methods of sustainable crop productions. Their fish will provide nutrients to herbs and vegetables that will be used by our culinary arts and science students, and eventually the fish too. We would like to remind everyone that you can learn more about the latest happenings at MBIT by liking us on Facebook, following us on Instagram, Twitter, and viewing our videos on YouTube. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, preparing tomorrow's workforce today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Gabriel.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. Um, as we discussed back in January, we had shared the status of student academic performance here in Centennial and had made the promise to the board that throughout the spring, we would be following up with a series of presentations at certain board meetings to kind of highlight the different initiatives that we're taking to help, uh, address some of the, the needs that came out of, came out of that report. Uh, as you know, I think it was two meetings ago, we talked about the school calendar and how that was one of the system changes we were making to help improve, uh, outcomes. Tonight, we're going to be talking about, uh, the ATSI grant, and we'll get into what that is a little bit later, as well as equity specifically related to our high school English Language Arts curriculum. Uh, tonight, I have, uh, Mrs. Shawana James Coles, Mrs. Melissa Bolden, Mrs. Hope Banshee from the high school, and then, uh, Mr. Joe Russ actually had a family engagement tonight, so I'll be stepping in for a few of his slides. Uh, the objectives tonight will be really two things, to try to connect a lot of what might seem like disparate, um, happenings going on in the district right now, uh, to everything from student academic performance, the state and federal mandates, equity, and then, uh, the process by which we determine books, uh, and what to bring into our curriculum at the high school. Uh, we're also going to touch on the concept of an evolving curriculum, the universality of classic texts, and how they connect to the idea of a modern classic and their implement, implementations, I'm sorry, implications, excuse me, in 21st century learning environments. Uh, if you remember this slide, uh, from the January 26th, uh, presentation, we are looking at all of this, all of this programming from four lenses out of the Office of Teaching and Learning, uh, both Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Different Systems. Uh, as we mentioned, back then, we had talked about different levels of student academic performance, from achievement data to growth data. We looked at ourselves both within the county, as well as southeastern Pennsylvania and the different peer districts in our area. Uh, we also had shared the Hanover research, I think it was a meeting or two ago, and about the learning loss estimator, and kind of how COVID has impacted, uh, certain groups of our students in the district in terms of learning loss. So tonight, uh, we're going to be really focusing on, uh, curriculum, uh, specifically in the areas of reading English Language Arts at the high school, uh, and having an equity lens. Uh, you know, many of you, some of you are on the equity team here in the district, so this is going to be sort of a conversation around both of those things. So here is the, here's the big picture of connecting the dots, right? These are the sort of disparate pieces we're going to try to, if we do a good job, uh, make clear on how they are, are impacting each other. So we have our Centennial curriculum over there on the left, uh, which we'll get into, uh, Mrs. Banshee will talk about in a little bit. Uh, we have our diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, push here in the district, and Mrs. Coles will, will get into that. As you know, a few years ago, we had our Excellence through Equity Quality Review, uh, in partnership with the University of Pennsylvania, uh, and gave us some recommendations. Uh, and what you'll see tonight is we are implementing some of those recommendations and, and the work we're going to share. And then two other things that we have going on, uh, we are currently under what's called corrective action, uh, as per IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And I'll let, uh, Mrs. Bolden talk about that a little bit. Uh, but in a nutshell, what that means is we've lost some local control over what we can do with our funding. And, and I'll let Mrs. Bolden talk a little bit more specifically about that. The other piece, uh, from the state is we are, uh, William Tenet High School is currently what's known as an ATSI school, uh, an additional targeted support and improvement school. It's a designation for three years. Uh, this was a presentation that was given to the board back in, I think, May or June, uh, at the end of last year, if you remember. Uh, and what that says is that we are, we have, um, certain groups of students that are underperforming, we're not meeting their needs, uh, we have three years to, to correct that, basically. Uh, and if not, we then move into a more comprehensive targeted improvement. And again, we run the risk of losing more local control over our programming, our curriculum, and, and what we're doing in our, in our buildings.
Mr. Gabriel, I'm sorry to interrupt, but would you emphasize that the corrective action didn't come into play for the current team that's?
Yeah, how long have we been? Two years of corrective action?
Yeah, they, um, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, Mrs. Bolden will talk about when that, when that hit. Yeah. So that's, that's going to, those are the, sort of the dots we're going to try to connect to y'all tonight, and then talk about what we're doing to address, um, and, and not end up in further, um, further improvement moving forward. So norms for looking at this data, as you know, we like to stick to our norms and help give us a, a lens to look, um, keeping decisions in the best interest of our students' intellectual and personal growth, focused decisions on fact, not on interpretation or assumption. You'll see some data tonight that we're going to share, uh, and some research that's helping to inform our decisions. And we've, we're always thinking in terms of ROI, right? Return on not only instruction, but investment is what we're spending getting us the results that we're hoping for. And then remaining future focus on continuous improvement and growth in curriculum instruction assessment and systems. So, uh, in 1990, uh, Dr. Radine Sims Bishop coined the phrase "windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors" to explain how children see themselves in books and how they can also learn about the lives of others through literature. This has been a very popular and, uh, effective way to consider what we bring into our classrooms for our kids. And I'm going to read you this short snippet from her essay. There's a full link to the essay in the, in the presentation. Uh, and it reads, it's, she writes this. "Books are sometimes windows, offering views of a world that may be real or imagined, familiar or strange. These windows are also sliding glass doors, and readers have only to walk through in imagination to become part of whatever world has been created or recreated by the author. When lighting conditions are just right, however, a window can also be a mirror. Literature transforms human experience and reflects back to us, and in that reflection, we can see our own lives and experiences as a larger part of, as a part of a larger human experience. Reading, then, becomes a means of self-affirmation, and readers often seek their mirrors in books." So this really, this idea of not only using books and literature to help kids see into the lives of others, but see themselves, is really going to be the, the overall focus of tonight, and sort of how, you know, the, the underlying theme that's going to connect all the different work we mentioned on the slide before. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Coles.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to turn to the side a little. Um, so one of the things when I presented to the board the last time, um, about our equity work, um, I always start with the definition of equity. It is also on our, um, district webpage. Um, in Pennsylvania, equity has been defined as every student having access to the educational resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education, and it is across race, gender, ethnicity, language, disability, sexual orientation, family background, and/or family income. And that's from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We also have equity literacy that we're discussing. Equity literacy is a framework for cultivating the knowledge and skills that enable us to be a threat to the existence of inequity in our sphere of influence. More than cultural competence, and you go to workshops and you hear them talk about cultural competence and diversity, um, equity literacy prepares us to see even the subtle ways in which access and opportunity are distributed unfairly across race, again, class, gender, identity, sexual orientation, disability, language, and other factors. Um, and then there is, um, the principles of equity literacy. There are 10 principles, which you have access. I'm not going to read them, but those principles refer to the, um, knowledge dimension of equity literacy as it pertains to educators and the school's efforts to ensure equitable and educational opportunity for our families who are experiencing poverty. As Dr., I mean, okay, you're a doctor. As Anthony mentioned, um, we, we, everything that we do, and I credit Dr. Ben for this, any meeting that we have, he always refers to the equity audit. So we had the equity audit in 2019, and there are six priorities that they listed for improvement. And one of the things they share with us is that they are not separate, that they work in conjunction. But specifically for our purposes tonight, Priority 2, Priority 4, and Priority 5 really support this work that we're trying to accomplish. Priority 2 is access, um, assess and provide for resources, including time, talent, and funding, to be equitably distributed throughout the districts in response to students, faculty, and staff needs. Provide access for all students to a high-quality instruction associated with rigorous coursework that engages students in projects and problem-solving worthy of the effort required. And Priority 5, engage in purposeful communication with students, their families, CSD leaders, and faculty and staff, and members of the larger school community for the purpose of learning with and from each other, even when conversations have to be difficult and uncomfortable. So why are we choosing some of these books that are anti-bias? Um, and cultural linguistic, um, cultural and linguistic responsiveness. Validating and affirming marginalized learners is the first step to building, uh, bridges towards academic achievement. And what they do is they call this vabbing, that we always validate, we affirm, we build, and then we build that bridge. Um, to be culturally linguistic responsive means going where the students are culturally, linguistically first, and then leading them where they need to be academically and socially for success. And again, that framework is called VAB, validate, affirm, build, and bridge. One of the things we're looking at is the books that we have in our classrooms, in our libraries. All of our books should be free of stereotypes, free from tokenism, which is something we discuss as some of the board members when we work with, um, PSBA. Um, and that tokenism is like, we just have one book on Asian-Americans, or one book on African-Americans, or one book on LGBTQ. That's a token. No, we want to make sure that we have multiple, um, that we avoid loaded words, that our books are accurate and respectful. And in our libraries, books should include people, not just animals. There was a recent survey that, that showed that a lot of our books in our elementary schools are animals, about stories and fables about animals. No, we want real people. Um, and it needs to show families and lifestyles that represent our program here in CSD. Families in the community, and that shows diverse abilities, be written and illustrated by people of color, include doors of all ages and people of color, and portray action towards change. We should also consider choosing books with recent publications, such as what we are doing tonight, that more accurately reflect our diversity as, in our society. As you know, we reported on some of the things our, um, equity team has done. Um, our teachers, building administrators, and OLI participated in the BCIU Curriculum Academy where the importance of cultural competency and cultural awareness were addressed. Um, as a special project, and she took this on herself, Mary Ellen Gilbert, who is a equity liaison at Davis, every, um, holiday or every month, she curates book titles around special themes. Um, and teachers, it goes out to the teachers, and they're able to a, add to it and collaborate and add titles. So to date, and some of these things have also been posted on our website, um, we've done lists for Hispanic Heritage Month, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Native Americans' Day, a month, um, Dua Le, Multicultural Thanksgiving, Multicultural Winter Holidays, Black History Month, Lunar New Year, and Women's History Month. And I wanted to add that our students from Tenet have been reading to our elementary students on some of these titles for Black History Month, um, and for Women's History Month. Our librarians have worked to review and purchase diverse texts. Our in-service days with our librarian has been, librarians have been devoted to ensuring that all students have the ability to see themselves in the books that they read. Um, as the new books are added to the collection, their Destiny, which is the library catalog, it highlights them, and at the elementary level, the books are displayed for the children in the libraries. Um, our literacy coach, Rose Millie, and myself attended, um, a professional development on that cultural, um, linguistic responsiveness, that vabbing. Um, and our Tenet team, equity team, has assisted the English department in the review and selection of some of these books to make sure that they are culturally sensitive and foster, um, diversity and inclusivity. Oh, that was so quick.
I have a quick question about.
Are we the same person?
No, no, no. But I, I, I love everything that, you know, about the library and stocking the library and thinking about how to present. My question is, and I'm sorry I don't know this offhand, do, like, how are students, like, is there structurally getting to the library? Like, you know, is there a period a week or something like that for the elementary? Yeah.
So at elementary school, they're still following their, um, schedules, so they do go to their specials. Um, and so they are going, they do go to the library and select books. Um, we, prior to them coming back in person, um, the librarians actually pull books and met parents outside on certain days, um, and was able to provide books. So we, we've always made sure that they've had the books that they needed. Um, as previously, uh, mentioned, the district, Centennial School District, has been cited for, um, over, the over-identification of students of color, um, in the category of emotional disturbance, and the amount of emotional support that we are providing to students, and how does this correlate with our, um, corrective action? So this evening, um, and each time we come together on the Facebook pages, there's a lot of talk about social-emotional learning and support, and how people feel about themselves, school, just managing, managing time. So, um, students identified as having an emotional disturbance, or students who receive, and students who receive emotional support, struggle oftentimes with the ability to self-regulate and to support themselves, and to feel better about themselves, and to manage their behaviors. Um, so this matches, um, this, um, as a part of our corrective action, Centennial School District has to show evidence to the Pennsylvania Department of Education that we have amended our policies and practices to support the social-emotional well-being of students of color, so that we do not over-identify. And, um, at this point, we are required to take a maximum of 15% of our IDEA budget, which, um, equals totally $324,078.93. We have lost control of our ability to choose what we spend that money on. It has to go to, um, preventing, um, students from being over-identified. And so we, um, Mr. Miller asked a question of when did this start? 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019? They took, the state took that data, um, and said that we are consistently, um, over-identifying our students of color. So we want to make sure we have supports in place to help students be able to feel better about themselves and to see themselves, to feel that Centennial is a place, Centennial School District is a place where they can be and they can find support without being identified as a student who needs emotional support.
Ms. Bolden?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling, so what you said is that this, they started identifying in 2016, correct?
No, they, they've been taking our data.
Right.
And they looked at our consistent practices.
Right.
From 2016, 17 up until now.
So my, my bigger question is, something like this doesn't just pop up in 2016.
It doesn't.
This is a long history of this process that led to where we are today. I don't want someone to think this just started in 2016, that's just when they started looking at the data.
Exactly. It's just when, so.
It's culturally.
Well, PDE realized that they needed to start looking at school districts.
Right.
And so this is something newer over the last few years. So that's why they started with those years of data, because PDE realized that they needed to bring to the attention of districts where students are over-identified. I would say that a concern is that it could be another category moving forward. So we have to be careful not just to look at the disproportionality of our students who receive emotional support, but we're also keeping an eye on our students who receive learning support, autistic support. So we're looking at everything, and as we change our practices and some of our policies, we can meet the needs of more, more students. And I would refer to it as the curve effect, as Dr. Benton taught us this week.
So I would say to you that, that what she just outlined is that we need to correct our main academic program. We need to serve students in our, what they call Tier One, where 75 and 80% of our students should be getting what they need and not being sent somewhere special. And that's what we're finding that is contributing to this, and if we don't address that, you know, it could be another subgroup another year. And that's what we're trying to address in making some changes. The, the cost factor that she outlined is actually bigger than that. That's the money that they're saying that we give you that you must dedicate to this resource. Well, remember, the more students who are in special ed, the higher the cost factor also. So that's the other part of your budget that then goes to that allocation. Our percentage of special ed students in our district is higher than the state average, and higher than some of the peer districts that we looked at.
I think Mr. Dixon was first.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just first of all, for clarification purposes, just to kind of put a point on it. So would it be fair to say that the funds and the direction that we're getting from the PDE on how to use these funds is meant sort of as a front-loaded investment so that we're not, in other words, over?
Yes.
Or replacing students of color into special ed programs when they don't in fact need it?
Yes, it's a preventive measure.
Right.
It is.
And I mean, then secondly, my comment is, I'm just, I'm terribly glad this work is happening. It's funny, I, just as a brief aside, I'm teaching Geneva Smitherman, who is an African-American linguist who worked in the 70s. And at that time, the fashionable thing was that they would, school districts would see students of color who were speaking in black vernacular and say, "You must have a speech impediment." And then they were enrolling people in speech impediment, which was ridiculous. And it sounds like that we had a similar type of problem here, sort of transmuted, so great.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Ms. Bolden, thank you very much. My point in asking the question I did was not to, it was to make sure that people understood that the problem didn't start this year.
Yes.
And the current team that's assembled, we've, since, since the problem was identified, we virtually had turnover in every area of administration. So, you know, this administration is not evaluating, this administration is working on correcting.
Yes. Mrs. Allenberg?
Thank you very much. My question is, what are the benchmarks that we need to hit in order, and is there a deadline in which to hit them?
Great question.
So that we may retain or get back the ability to utilize that money as we see fit?
So we are, we have to submit data every year, okay? And we have to spend this money over 20 months for, well, so we have corrective action for two years, this current year and next year. They had to take, of course, this year, COVID, there wasn't a lot of planning last year to prepare for this year. So we are still in corrective action for another year. So change will come over time, but we're examining our data. So each year, we have to report. So we might be in corrective action for another school year. The report, the notification comes out in February of, of the school year. So I'm thinking, just my experience with corrective action.
Let me be clear, chances are we will be because of what happened with COVID.
Yes.
They pretty much are holding everyone stagnant from the information we received. So it is a highly likelihood that nothing's going to change, especially that the fact that we probably would not have made enough progress to even create change, given the learning loss and other things that have happened because of COVID. But the communication that we've received is, even at the federal level, everything is kind of status quo with this process.
I agree. I anticipate we will be in corrective action next year, but we should still see, hopefully, a decrease in some effects of the work that is being done. Everything is going to take time, because the students that we have in our district are already identified as needing emotional support. We're looking at support being provided to regular education, because now we're looking at not identifying so many more students as needing emotional support, students of color. Because you can't, there's not much you can do about what's already in place, not unless students no longer need the support. But it's going to take some time. So I do anticipate we will be in corrective action again next year. But I still, but I still anticipate that if we're in corrective action, we should still see improvement.
So I'm not, I hear the reporting is annual. What I'm not clear on is what our benchmarks are, and if there's a deadline for those benchmarks?
So we have, all right, sorry, let me answer that question clearly. We have an auditor. I received communication today. We have been contacted, so I will make a phone call tomorrow, see what the timeline is, and then I will receive more information as far as the benchmarks. But the state is kind of behind a little bit, of course, because of COVID. So originally, the, the notification we've received said that we would get contact in the fall of 2020. Today, I mean, we received a letter, but today I receive information, log into the system, and find out what you need to do. So communication is a little behind. So the answer to your question is, I do not know the exact benchmarks, because I received more detailed communication today.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Gaddison?
So if we end up identifying fewer students for special education, how are we going to help the students that's going to be underachievers in regular education?
So, great question, and I think that that's going to be a part of the rest of the presentation. Remember, we, right now, for corrective action, we are specifically discussing students who receive emotional support. So there's a lot of SEL supports. Just this week, this week and next week, teachers are receiving social-emotional learning sessions virtually. So it's a process, but we're starting now with regular ed, and you'll hear some more in the presentation.
So why include the conversation around IDEA and corrective action in with our ATSI conversation, the equity conversation, and the curriculum conversation? Because what we're noticing is, as Melissa and I are working, you know, our offices are working closely together, we're finding that it's a lot of the same kids, right? A lot of our subgroups are kids that we are not serving to the level that we'd like to be right now. So this is really about expansion and addition of resources and of programming to help all kids. It's not about replacement, right? It's really about expansion and variety. So TSI, Targeted State Improvement, the regular TSI is an early warning system for at-risk groups as a signal to schools that may be at future risk for more intensive support, like ATSI. We currently do have two buildings, an elementary and a middle school, that are under TSI. So it's sort of like a shot across the bow. There's no designation yet, there's no grant money yet, it's just, hey, heads up, these kids, if, if this continues for another year, you're going to be in ATSI. The high school is the only building actually under ATSI additional targeted improvement. It was, it's supposed to be a three-year designation, so we would have three years to get our scores up for certain subgroups, which I'll get into in a minute. However, with the PSSAs and Keystone's not happening, as was mentioned, as Melissa mentioned, you know, everything's kind of floating another year. They're sort of just letting things move forward as is, stagnated until the state assessment system, which, you know, we, we know is happening this spring, is back up and running, and they can actually collect data on, on the students. So the high school received TSA, the ATSI designation for economically disadvantaged students, as well as our Hispanic students. And the indicators were our math and ELA achievement, our math and ELA growth, as well as our English language proficiency. So those were the markers, Mrs. Allenberg, to your question, that we need to really take a hard look at and get to those kids and make sure that we're providing, you know, supports for those students. Again, going back to the, why hope is here tonight, you know, we're going with that windows and mirrors theme, right? Making sure that we are, what we're teaching and what we have available to students is reflective of our demographic and of those students. The ATSI grant presents an opportunity.
Mr. Gabriel?
Yep.
But I, I think one of the things that you could actually respond to, to Mr. Godis question, is also why we're doing the work on looking at Eureka Math.
Yep.
While we're looking at our reading and literacy.
The springboard, early literacy.
And a program with a handover research, because at the end of the day, if we don't address the math and ELA in our, again, Tier One program, that's not going to help, as Ms. Bolden talked about, stop the pipeline in feeder pattern. We're looking at also a different approach to our middle school program with regards to a very focused math and ELA program that would actually give what we call standards-based, priest-identified curriculum with regards to math and ELA that we're looking at and reviewing right now with our team. But that is, the work is around math and ELA to actually fix our, or try to address the shortcomings in our Tier One, which is our main instructional program. It's also about differentiation of instruction within the classroom. Again, not a place, and as a parent of a special needs child, the idea that we send a student somewhere to get help shouldn't be the first decision that we make.
Right. And as Dr. Benton mentioned, right, a few years ago, we adopted Amplify Science in our middle schools to help address, you know, more rigor in science. Two years ago, we adopted CPM Math in grades six through 12 to help, you know, help bolster our math program, our Tier One math program. And as Dr. Benton mentioned, we're currently looking at K-12 RILA, K-10 RILA, Reading English Language Arts, to really look at what are we doing from, you know, this goes back to the work with AM Academy, right, the work with PLN and Eureka, and all the things we've been sharing over the past year that started, you know, a few years ago to get into motion so that we can continue to build a Tier One program. As Dr. Benton has said it a few times, he said, it's not that, it's not that the program we have was broken or flawed, it's giving us what it was built to give us. So what we're trying to do now is change that bill to give us something different, right, so that all kids have access and have opportunity. So some of the areas that we had targeted for growth through the ATSI grant with the high school was increased student engagement with modern, high-interest diverse texts, increased student engagement with nonfiction texts, increased student access to math resources, increased resources for ELD students, and then professional development for teachers. So this is a screenshot of our, of our demographic breakdown from the Future Ready PA Index. So over on the right, it gives our percent enrollment by student groups, our economically disadvantaged, which is one of the areas that we're struggling with right now, our English language learners, special education. And then on the left, it breaks it down by race and ethnicity. So in, in order to be true to data, we had the department work really hard with Mr. Rutz to pull our representation in our core texts in grade six to 12. So going back to the idea of windows and mirrors, right, are, do we have texts that represent a variety of backgrounds so that students can see others' lives and learn about others, but can students also see themselves? The blue text, if you can see the colors, up in the top box, is our current percentage of demographic makeup in a certain area. So I'll highlight Hispanic, Hispanic-American, so we're currently at about 17.6% of our students are of that background. We only have 1.7% of our texts reflective of their experience, right? And that kind of goes back to what Shawna was saying earlier about tokenism, right? Well, we have one book, so that's great. But when almost, you know, over 17% of our students are coming from a certain background and a certain culture, we need to have more, we need to have more representation and more diversity in our offerings for those students. And, I mean, I'm not going to go through all of these, but you can, you can read the rest. As well as our choice books, very similar, right? We have populations of different demographics of students, and right now, our books, and Hope will speak to this a little bit more, aren't really representative of who our students are in terms of trying to help themselves, help, help them see themselves in the books we read, in the stories, in the fiction, and in the nonfiction, whether it's representative authors, male, female, LGBTQ, or a particular ethnic background.
So along with taking a look at those statistics, it caused us to look at our curriculum and try to evaluate exactly what it is that we can do to allow students to see windows and mirrors in the curriculum that we teach. And to kind of put it in perspective, in the movie Shadowlands, which is about C.S. Lewis, it talks about reading to know that we are not alone. And particularly in this time where we're in remote learning or, you know, virtual hybrid environments, providing literature where students can see themselves and provide connectability is all the more important. Not only that, but we wanted to make sure that when we were looking at the texts, these are the units, these are the themes that we cover throughout our curriculum, and these go through classics, these go through modern books, but these allow us to provide a unifying theme and connection with our students and allow us to sort of pair texts and provide a way that they can connect with the literature. And when we decided to go and look at these books, one of the things that our literary supervisor, Mr. Newman, said is, we should really get the students involved in reading these and seeing what their takeaway was. And so rather than me tell you, we thought that we would present a short presentation on their reflections.
Come and blow the lights. Thank you.
A lot of kids my age find it difficult to sort of engross themselves in the literature that we read in English class because it's so either old or like kind of, it feels like it's out of touch with like our experiences. And I think that's also part of the reason why putting more modern literature in a school curriculum is like important to kids and their experiences. A lot of kids my age find it difficult to sort of engross themselves in the literature that we read in English class because it's so either old or like kind of, it feels like it's out of touch with like our experiences. And I think that's also part of the reason why putting more modern literature in a school curriculum is like important to kids and their experiences.
Some of my favorite things about the book were that it really, really covered the importance of friendship during difficult times and making those connections to other people. And another thing that really, really stuck with me was the fact that these kids had to face their own mortality and deal with this grief while it was happening, and they hadn't really faced these kinds of challenges before.
The representation in this book, I know in high school, I didn't really have that representation when reading in English classes. It was really cool to see people apart from POCs and the LGBT community, and people coming from different home situations, including people from the foster care system, and teen moms, and people from single-parent homes. I thought that was really cool.
There are a lot of ways to be successful, and the road to success looks different for
for everyone. These different topics kind of related to everyone and all these different aspects of myself, and I knew that my peers could also take away different things from the book as well. Some of the overall themes of Stamped were the different perspective of history and how race has kind of been a systemic issue in ways that me, a black woman, didn't even know. So it kind of took me out of my perspective and out of my box to see these topics of race and how Malcolm X was treated and Martin Luther King, and how race has been an issue for a really long time, and how much work we are going to have to put in to kind of solve these issues. Stamped personally connected with me because I have taken history since second grade, and I never really connected with history. I've always been an English person, but Stamped really made me connected to history because it felt like it was my history. It was history in a way that I had never seen it before, and it didn't feel like history. It felt like it was just a story, a fairy tale, but then, at the end of the book, they said, you know, this isn't just someone's nightmare, this is real, this is what had happened. And it changed my perspective on the history that I had already read and heard and learned for years, and it changed it all, and it kind of broke it down and restructured it in a way that is both terrifying and fascinating.
Yeah, I'd just like to emphasize, I think, the importance of increasing the diversity in the literature that we read. I think we, we read some really, really wonderful works, but it would be really, really nice to see more of the LGBTQ+ representation and more of the minority representation and more stories about hardship that children can relate to.
I generally have struggled with finding books that I see myself in and books that represent like me and the people around me because I'm LGBT, and so I really think that it's important for kids like me to be able to see themselves, or for people of color to be able to see themselves in the literature that they read, especially in school, the literature that they talk about and dissect. I think that it's important because it allows you to feel seen and it allows you to feel heard.
I think the more that our curriculum can relate to each and every student we have, the more beneficial it will be and the stronger we will be as a community.
And one of the things that we touched on tonight was hearing student voices, and so our department took that to heart when we were selecting these things because we wanted to give them a voice and hear what they had to say. So with, this here is the policy that we use that I'm sure you're familiar with, and I'm not going to read this to you, but this was the basic policy that we used to guide it. We also took into consideration several things. One is that we needed to kind of break out of this idea that curriculum is static, that it, it's not that way anymore, that it is a constantly evolving situation. And by incorporating modern texts, we can couple them with the classics to help them relate to the themes of the past and see how they still exist in the present, and some of these issues have always existed. The primary focus is to connect with the students through the books so that we can teach them the skills. We need to have their interest in what's in front of them so that we can provide the skills that they need beyond here. And we need high interests and connectability so that they can see themselves, the windows and mirrors. What, the number one thing, as I mentioned, was skills for growth. By far, that is what absolutely we were taking a look at. We use the literature that we have to teach the skills. But along with all those things, we also looked at their literary merit, the genre, what texts we can pair with these books, multiple perspectives, and most importantly, the last two, the relevance to issues in society so that the students feel connected to the work that they're looking at, and the mirrors and windows. The process started with an initial list of approximately 50 titles. We narrowed it down to about 27 selections, which were mostly nonfiction and diverse pieces. Following that, we had the English Department, the Literati, which is our Student English Honor Society, the Equity Team, and Administration take a look at these things based on purpose and appropriateness. And the titles that we selected were based on all the criteria that I've just met, mentioned, along with how well that they can fit and pair with the current resources that we have and how well they address the skills that we need our students to improve with. Last meeting, you approved the purchase of these items, and they are-
Those were the ones-
I'm sorry, I apologize, thank you. These, these were the ones that, just to let you know, that's not every book that we looked at, we approved and sent forward. There were a lot of books that we decided were either dated or didn't address or didn't feel like they, and students provided the feedback on these as well, that, that didn't feel like they had the connectivity that we were hoping for. This, these are the books that you approved for purchase last month, and they are on the way right now. And these are the books that we are looking for in round two. I should mention that we still have a portion of funds of the grant left in which we are looking to purchase the remaining books for the funds that were allotted for this, but it's an ever-evolving process, and as we find one book that we say no to, we find three books to consider. But most importantly, the idea is, is that we engage all of our readers, all of our students that are sitting in front of us on a daily basis so that we can connect with them, whether, whether virtually or hybrid, connect with them in terms of their socioeconomic status, their culture, their history, and be able to teach the skills to all of our students by providing material in which they see themselves.
So to wrap it up and bring it back to the, the opening slide, again, trying to connect a lot of disparate parts, but the threads that run throughout, I think, hopefully are pretty clear at this point. You know, as Mrs. Bolden said, we've, you know, lost some local control in terms of the IDEA. The ATSI grant, which is paying for the books, is, has been given to us, which is great, but again, it's for this specific purpose. We need to increase our economically disadvantaged students, our English language learners, right, and, and other different subgroups. So that is why these are the books as we looked at last meeting, as well as what we're asking for this meeting, which will come to approval later on in the night, you know, for, to, to meet our kids where they are, give them the windows and mirrors they need and sliding glass doors to learn about other cultures, learn about other people, learn about other perspectives and point of views, but then also see themselves represented in, in what we, in what we do. Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to go into such depth, everyone. I, I really appreciate it, and I feel like shining a light at, at that level is so important for our parents at home to see the effort that's being put forth to, to close those gaps. So I, I appreciate all the work that goes into that, thank you.
Credit to the team.
Mr. Martin?
They're doing a great job.
Okay, I was going to save these till we got to the agenda, but I'll ask them now and then I'll be able to move ahead. Are these books mandatory reading or are they optional reading for the students?
So when we look at our curriculum, as I mentioned, it's not any more a static curriculum, it's an ever-evolving curriculum. So to say that a piece or even a whole text is required reading, many of the pieces that we've gotten, particularly some of the nonfiction pieces, are going to be used in, in smaller sections and in isolation. We are also in the process of developing and looking at how to make our nine, 10 curriculum workable in terms of improving our Keystone scores and addressing the skills that we need. So when we're talking about required texts, we're talking about an, an ever-evolving process. And certainly, some of these books will be considered, but again, it's, it's not so much the idea of saying this is a definitive piece, or at least I don't have that answer yet. But as we go ahead and revamp the curriculum, the curriculum will be put in front of you for approval.
Let me, let me ask you a specific question, then.
Sure.
I, I have not read any of these books.
Okay.
However, I did take the time to read book reviews for all these nine books that you're asking about.
Yes.
Based on the book reviews that I read, at least three of these books feature police brutality, for example. A student whose father is a police officer, as we found out with the no-fated letter that was sent out here in January. I don't think they'd appreciate being required to read that book that if involved police brutality. I, I just don't think that making that mandatory, if it's optional, I have no question, if somebody wants to read an optional book, read whatever book you'd like to read and have these available, that's a wonderful thing. If you make it mandatory, I think that could create some difficulty. Some of the other comments I saw when I read the book reviews, and I, these are reviews, I did not read the books. Some of these books feature strong language, sexual content, racial profiling, white privilege, systematic racism, Islamophobia, and other things in that area, which I guess, to some degree, that's what they're supposed to do. And if the books are optional, I don't have a problem with it. Kids could read, should read books that they feel good about, that they learn, that's wonderful. If these books are required reading, I think that can create some difficulty with the students, perhaps, when they get home and, and other things, and raising issues that don't necessarily need to be, need to be read as mandatory. Optional, fine, mandatory, I have a problem.
Mr. Panofsky?
If you don't mind, Mr. Martin, I actually have a question.
I certainly don't mind, Mr. Panofsky.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Do you think our kids should be forced to read Huckleberry Finn?
No.
Okay, Ben?
Doctor Seuss maybe, but not Huckleberry Finn.
Okay, okay, no, listen, I, I just wanted to make sure.
Even though I read it years ago, and I don't think it, you know, was detrimental effect, but that's okay.
Okay. I want to echo the thanking you for all your hard work that Ms. Islandberg already started with. I know from my own perspective and my own experience how far seeing myself portrayed in literature in high school could have helped, not so much me because I grew up in a very supportive environment, but a lot of people I know who didn't. And for all of those people, to the young lady who was speaking, it's so unbelievably important for you, especially when you're in high school, to see yourself in what you're learning, but also, in many cases, to see that life goes past high school and there is more that occurs in the world than in high school, and that can just help so many people just by having the ability to see themselves in what they're reading, and I did not have that, and I know many people who didn't, so.
Ms. Islandberg?
I just wanted to comment in regard to the reviews that Mr. Martin was, was speaking about. The whole point to this process is to bring into focus the fact that we've ignored a lot of these issues and haven't given our students an opportunity to learn that there are things outside of their own home environments. And, and yes, some of these issues may trigger a, a student, and I know as a parent with a child in school, if someone came to me, if my child came to me and said, this text is upsetting me, I don't want to read it, I would, I would talk to them about it, ask what the, the reasons were, talk with the teacher. All of our teachers, as far as I am concerned, and that may not be the case, but it's my perception, are willing to talk to parents with concerns and give alternate work if that's what's necessary. But I think to take these, the subject matters that were noted and to just push them out of the classroom is, is an oversight, and I think that that's what we're trying to avoid here.
Any other questions?
I, I, I think it's perfect. I mean, honestly, I just think that you're, you're addressing all students, and that's how it needs to be. You know, everyone wants to be seen and, and know that, you know, I'm out there, there's other people like me out there, and, and that's how it should be. You know, I'm sure everyone's not going to agree, so I don't expect everyone to have my opinion, but I, I think it was fantastic. And hearing those students speak their mind was just, it, it was wonderful, it really was.
Mr. Dixon?
I do have a que, first of all, I didn't know, did you want to answer, I think Mr. Martin had a question on the floor.
Well, I, I do want to add some clarity. You do have policy and administrative regulation 105.2 that is a method for a parent or to address those types of concerns that Mr. Martin raised. So that does exist, just to make everyone aware.
Right.
Only one of these books, if I'm correct, is nonfiction, the other eight are fiction, is that correct?
There's a couple nonfiction, correct?
I'm sorry, I'd have to go back and, yeah.
There's one I know of that is nonfiction.
I think Stamped, Stamped is nonfiction, and the Fifty Seven Buses also-
That's the one that I know of is nonfiction.
Stamped is history.
Stamped, yeah, Stamped is considered nonfiction, and Fifty Seven Buses is based on a true story.
Yeah.
So to, to address what, what you were saying, first of all, we looked at several very notable places that review books that have, you know, very conservative and very liberal people on the panel, and we evaluated those perspectives. To address the book that you were talking about in terms of, and I think you're talking about All American Boys, I encourage you to, to read the book because our, our job as English teachers is not to convince students of, of a side or of a perspective, but rather to provide a safe place where students can have a conversation. And again, the, the most important part here is that we're teaching the skills and the literary merit involved in this book, as, much of which has been addressed in our classics as well, it just happens to be under the form of a different conflict in this case. But it, it is a very complicated and nuanced book that is not at all black and white, it is very gray in terms of trying to figure out the complications of it. So again, with addressing the Equity Team and, and taking a look at it and the complexities of it and listening to what the students had to say who read it, that, that's why we ultimately decided. We also took a look at other curriculums as well across the nation and even in our area that are utilizing All American Boys. We have a local district right now who has taken a look at Stamped and is having it as a not-all-school read, because that's hard to do right now in a pandemic, but they are having online virtual seminars just based on Stamped and, and discussing that book.
Mr. Doncato?
Oh, I never, go ahead.
Andrew didn't get to talk yet.
No, 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 that's fine, go ahead, Mrs., I, I'll, I'll wait.
That's all right.
Oh, all right. No, I was just going to say, I mean, thank you, you kind of said what I was going to say in the sense that I also teach English literature at the collegiate level, and indeed, I mean, the one thing, and Mr. Martin, I'm sure you'll appreciate this, that one of the things that, you know, I know as a, when you're teaching literature, you've got to not be afraid to present a book that will challenge the perspective at least of some of the students in the room. It doesn't mean you're telling them they have to accept that perspective, not at all, but they have to be able to be exposed and think about things from a perspective other than their own. And in fact, one of the problems that you'll hear about college campuses, and they're not wrong, is when, you know, there can be this fear of, like, I can't hear something that upsets me, you know what I mean? Sometimes you have to be willing to listen to something that will challenge your set perspective. And there are ways good teachers figure out how to give students that space to like, listen, you're going to read this, you're going to accept it or not, and that's it, you know, but.
Are there any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
For the sake of time, I'm not going to go in very much detail in the governor's report. I do want to point out to the board that we uncovered a issue with the calendar that was adopted for this current year. April 1st was a snow makeup day. There is a discrepancy in that we don't need to make up that day for students, but that is a day that if teachers were not at work, they would not meet their contractual obligation for the number of days that are scheduled to be worked. We are in the process of attempting to develop a course of action to address that situation. We thought we had a solution, but as of today, there were some other questions that were raised that we need to consider in our meeting with the CEA with regards to a, a solution to that situation. The governor's budget, again, I'm not going to go into it, it is attached to the agenda for those who want to see it, but the context of it is, obviously, there's new leadership and dynamics. We, I did, along, I think I saw Mr. Martin on there too, participate in the Bucks County AVC Committee on Education meeting. You know, obviously, there's challenges with the budget associated with- You know, obviously, there's challenges with the budget associated with COVID-19. As of the presentation of this current budget, things have shifted a little bit. As you know, the $1.9 billion plan is moving, as you heard was probably going to happen as last time we met with you, but it is moving. That may shift some things, but the proposed budget is a $37.8 billion budget proposal. The conversation has been is that, as it was currently presented, it's kind of dead on arrival, but it really is, if you know history, you start at a point, you start negotiating. So that's what's going to happen in that process. There is the raising of multiple fronts of new revenue. It is a substantial, huge increase to public education as presented, but there is some concern about how that's being funded that is creating the concern between the legislators. But a $1.3 billion increase to basic education funding, a $200 million increase to special education funding, a $30 million proposed increase to early childhood, and a $11 million proposed increase to early intervention programs. And with that said, again, I'm not going to go there for the sake of time, the big thing is giving an update on the questions that you spoke to us about at the budget workshop, to answer some of that and bring back some of the answers to your questions that you asked. So, Mr. Greenwood will step in. So, sorry I talk fast, but trying to consolidate some things, update you and get to the main thing. I'm answering your questions from the budget work session. So I allocated my time to Mr. Greenwood to do that for you all.
Thank you. So, I wanted to thank, start by thanking the board members and, and the team here for participating in last Wednesday's.
Mr. Green, our apologies. Madam Chair, I forgot, and for the board secretary, I did get a message that Mr. Burden did join us at 7:04 PM for the record, and I apologize, they did send that to me, and I meant to tell you.
I wanted to thank everybody for their participation, their questions, and their engagement in last Wednesday's budget work session. That may have been a first for Centennial, and I thought it was a really great idea that Dr. Benn brought to us and really gave us the opportunity to go through it. We've really tried to, since our January 26 meeting, present and, and keep the board updated on the process, because the budget is truly a, it's truly a process, right? It starts in the fall, and it's continually evolving as we work through the many issues that the budget, the budget contains. So I will go through these, some of these were shown last week, but wanted to highlight them again. This shows our earned income tax updated through February now, and again, as you can see by the star in the center there, we are, we are at or slightly above the run rates and the collections from the prior two years. And one of the reasons that, that, you know, this sort of has been surprising me, I've continued to wait for the, the other shoe to drop, if you will, in a PASBO conference that also included the independent fiscal office, this financial crisis brought on by the pandemic differs from previous crises that we've experienced in that the impact is not being felt uniformly, particularly relative to wages. Another word of caution as we go through our budgeting is that the stimulus funds have provided stabilization on a temporary basis and will certainly impact future budgets. This was the budget as shared last Wednesday, $124 million in revenue, $126.527 in expenses for a deficit of $2.4 million. And then the full, if, the full Act One index was, was approved, that 3% would be $2.3 million and a $75 million deficit. Again, it is a work in progress, and, and that's the work that we are, we are doing now.
Yeah, $5,000.
Pardon me, were you good? This is a slide that I think we ended up spending most of our time on Wednesday, right? It really laid out in front of us the options based on, on, you know, between a zero and a 3% increase, and allowed us to have some dialogue around that. And we're going to come back to this, and this is really the focus of our update tonight. One difference, as we move forward, the long-range impact, as we talked about here, was really based on a flat 2.44%, which is the prior five-year average. Going forward, we'll look at a rolling average, which includes not only the past, but includes the forecast for the future, for a more balanced view of what we would expect. So it brings us to our five-year planning. A second update is that after I had gone through and put all the slides together, the IFO came out with an adjustment to their original Act One projections. You can see that they had reduced slightly the employer cost index, their ECI number, from 3.2 to 2.7, which brought down their estimated Act One increase for the 2223 year from 3.7 to 3.3. If we talked about it last week, the Act One forecast put on, or proposed or projected by the IFO had a 3.7% increase in 2020, 2223, and in 2324, followed by a 3.3, and then a 2.7%. So we've adjusted our rolling forecast to represent the most updated index. So as we move forward, we're going to show three projections based on the following: the 2% increase in 2022, and then the five-year rolling forecast for the remainder of the, the long-range plan, a 2.5% 2022 increase, and again, that same five-year or four-years of rolling forecast, rolling index, and then a 2.5 with the IFO's projected Act One increase as, as I just shared with you. This first scenario assumes the 2.0% increase in 2022. This scenario shows a deficit of $862,666 in 2022, and $805,000, $805,000 in 2023, and then making a surplus in 2024 through 2026. The fund balance in this scenario remains low, below the recommended threshold until really the final year, when we, we cross over sort of that 8% threshold for the fund That, that is, you know, that is, as, as shown on the left, you know, there's, shows some financial stability concerns, as well as potential costs for future bond financing that our bond rating could be impacted by that. The second scenario is the 2.5% scenario. This, we forecast a deficit in 2022 of $468,756, and a deficit of $393,561 in 2023. Surplus begins in 2024 and runs through the planning period. The fund balance in this scenario remains below the recommended threshold until 2024. And then in 2025, we could begin to be in a position to support a dedicated fund balance strategy. We talked a little bit about that last week as well. And this last scenario includes the 2.5% increase in 2022, and then the IFO's projected Act One increases if they were each implemented. This scenario, we have the same deficit in 2022 of $468,756, and then a surplus we begin to generate in, in the remaining years. Fund balance recovers in 2024, and in 2025, in 2026, we could again develop a fund balance strategy moving into the future. This slide simply compares those three options, the projected financial results. On the left, you see the annual surplus and deficit, looking back five years and looking forward five years. The red block is the 2% scenario, the black is the 2.5% scenario, and the gray blocker line, depending on the side, is the 2.5 IFO scenario. The graph on the right shows the general fund balance over that same period for each of those three scenarios. I've added this dotted line, which sort of extends the fund balance as of the end of 2020. You can kind of see us dipping down below that and then recovering. Under the 2% rolling forecast, we don't really recover our 2020 fund balance until almost five years later. And, and that picture sort of demonstrates that. Under the 2.5% rolling forecast, we recover that a year sooner. Okay? Yes, Mr. Dixon?
The fund balance, when you get out to 2023, '24, '25, like, I, I see that's represented as a straight line, but I assume that you, you're talking about the fund balance being a percentage, like, the recommended fund balance being the recommended, was it, 14%?
The, the recommended fund balance is, is an 8% non-dedicated general fund, not assigned fund balance.
My question is that, that 8% must go up over time, right, of our total?
What, I, I don't see an 8, what are you referring to as 8%? The 8% is, is a standard.
Well, you're extrapolating from the, like.
So this, these are in dollars, right? So this, this is the fund balance.
Right. I'm talking about where the fun, so that, that straight line that goes across, right? That represents where the fund balance, if you go back where it's not dotted.
Now, this, so this, where we attempted to show here is, this is where we are at the end of this past June, right?
Right, '20.
Right, '20.
Yes.
Based on the current budget and based on the future deficits, we dropped below that, right?
Understood.
We don't recover until, until 2025, '26 at a 2%.
Understood. My question is that the fund balance in '20.
Yes.
Presumptively is the recommended 8% or thereabouts of the overall operating budget?
Uh, it is, it is, I'd have to look at that, it's a great question, I can get back to you. It isn't, I don't think it's, it's in that ballpark, it's in the range.
Are we talking about the 2021, so 7.5, I think, is what it says on the chart you have, 7.55%?
Yeah.
The fund balance for this year?
Right. My only point was that the, an 8% fund balance is going to go up over time.
Yeah.
You know, like, so what's today's 8% fund balance is, is not what it will be in 2025. So I was just thinking that that line itself actually has to slant upwards.
That's true, right? So the 8%, the 8% is, 8% of the next year's fund, uh, total expenses is, is how PDE looks at that. And you're correct, right? So you could show, I, you know, I was thinking myself, hey, do I slant the line or do I not?
That's what I'm getting at.
I felt it very clear to just say, hey, this is where we were, to get back to there.
Like, in other words, recovering the 2020 fund balance in 2026 isn't as good as it was in '20, is my point.
This slide just compares then the 2.0% of the 2.0% rolling forecast to the 2.5% rolling forecast. And as we've talked about in the meeting in the end of February, the compounding impact of that decision. So just with everything else remaining the same, the expenses and the forecasted increases into the future, the difference between a 2.0 in '22 and 2.5 in '22, after three years, is an additional $1.2 million. And through that planning period, it's an additional $2.1 million. You can see that a 2%, is roughly $78, $78 a year in increase, roughly $6.57 a month, and the 2.5% increase to the median home is $98.56, or $8.20, to give that some perspective. And looking at fund balance, right, so Dr. Benn has suggested, when we talked last Wednesday, about the idea of, of creating sort of assigned fund balance, which is a way that allows school districts to save money for things that they know are coming down the road, right? Whether those are maintenance items, whether we had the, the example of the Astroturf field that costs a million dollars and it needs to be replaced every 10 years or so, we can begin building in planning for that so as to not be caught short and, and not be deferring maintenance. So I found this chart from Five Site, our Forecast Five analytics tool, which compares 2019, which is the latest information they have, in fund balance. And you can see Centennial is in the blocked section, these are all, all the Bucks County District schools, and shows the varying fund balance amounts based on assigned or unassigned amounts, balances. Yes?
What are the green dots?
The green dots represent sort of their percent of the expense. So the green dot sort of runs over, over to where it aligns onto this percent of expenses of the unassigned fund balance. Okay? So the red, the red box represents that unassigned balance, that dot should tell you about where it is as a percent of that year's expenses.
Okay.
Which is sort of the gauge of the 8% rule.
Got it.
Okay? So I think this shows that, you know, Centennial's fund balance has been managed very well over the years, it's been fairly consistent year over year. I think in a 10-year window, it, it has stayed relatively flat. But other districts are certainly employing the tool and that strategy to identify and to commit and/or to assign fund balances to future work. Centennial does have a $2.5 million as a part of our total fund balance, 2.5 assigned to the PISers rate increases. So we have $2.5 million that was board assigned, we have not utilized those funds, but it's in the total of our 8%, it is a part of that number, or part of our total fund balance. The last couple of slides I have, just again, for perspective in utilizing our Forecast Five tool. This slide shows the equalized mill rate, right? So equalized mills are determined by dividing the school district's total taxes collected by its total market value. Each district has different taxes, has different strategies around that, different real estate values. This tries to equalize those, and you can see where Centennial is in the list of Bucks County school districts, slightly below the average and sitting right there.
It's important to note that if you look at two of the four, possibly three of the four, they're actually below the average because their property values are higher than ours. So it takes less effort to raise the dollars to get to it. So when we look at property values of Council Rock and Centennial, I mean, and Central Bucks, they have a stronger business base that's helping. So one of the reasons they're below the average is it doesn't take as much effort to produce as many dollars.
Right. As, as Dr. Benn, you know, alluded to and, and, you know, preempted my slide, you can see here, you can see here, which is perfect, you played right in, thank you, you can see in here, you know, the residential assessed value in, in Central Bucks is, is $1.5 billion. In Council Rock, it's $1.1 billion, just the residential component. In all of Central Bucks is, is, you know, on this chart for 2019, it's close to $1.8 billion. Centennial is about $550 million. So that, that impact and that value certainly plays a part of it. And I know it's a very complex, and it's not a necessarily straightforward process, but we're trying to, to share the information as we, as we have it, and certainly using the. but we're trying to share the information as we have it and certainly using the Forecast Five tool to do so.
I just, for anyone out there listening, I want you to pay very close attention to what was just said because that's something that I have been saying for a few years now, that when we compare property values between Centennial and Central Bucks and Centennial and Council Rock, I can tell you right now that the person who built the house I grew up in, Council Rock, built a development in Centennial, and the house I grew up in, in Council Rock, sells for $200,000 more than it does in Centennial. So it's easier for districts around us to get money because their properties are valued higher. So that's so important that we keep that in mind.
Any questions, Mr. Miller?
No, I just wanted to toss in, the last time we discussed this, I was somewhat critical of the homestead exclusion. I've since learned that it will remain level, possibly because it's going to be subsidized. But let's just say, we're not the only ones relying on virtual activity. That the fund has been a little helped by digital gambling.
Sure. No, that's very good. That was an important aspect of the planning. And we heard that as well in the conferences. We heard that that homestead rebate, hopefully people were able to get in that hadn't, based on our February update. And I do think that that will be funded. There was talk about that last year and really sort of brought the house down in Harrisburg.
Mr. Panofsky?
So last week, when we met for the budget planning meeting, I had kind of asked to split the difference, in a way, with a lower tax increase combined with finding extra savings. Obviously, I don't expect that in one week, we're going to have that money found. But in case people didn't hear that, I do want to say I had brought up the idea of trying to find about $500,000, if possible, to cut from the budget. That way, we could keep the tax increase a little bit lower and not affect our fund balance overall.
My apologies, that is correct, right? So our plan, the district, the administration had found about $1.1 million in February through that work. And when I showed this square back to the beginning where we said we spent most of our time, right? The board challenged the administration to find another $400,000 or $500,000 in addition to the $1.1.
And our work is still ongoing because we're going through the staffing conversations. But I will tell you what we shared, then, is what's coming to be true. You know, while I still believe that, you know, the 2.5 is doable, it still puts a strain and could be costly even then if you had to go out and do bond because we are below the recommended 8%. But again, understanding that a COVID place and the issue of trying to, as Mr. Panofsky said, find some type of medium between Act I and lower, we are committed to trying to find that. And we think, as you look at, as you can see in the other slide, that is two more years of deficits that we will face, whether it's 2.0 or 2.5. It's just that 2.0 makes it even bigger and it takes longer to recover, going almost five years before you get back to that place of fiscal, somewhat fiscal stability. But we are continuing to work to meet the commitment that we walked away with, definitely at least trying to make sure that we can bring to board a solid proposal for the 2.5 at minimum.
Thank you. And I wouldn't expect that work to be done in one week. That would be superhuman, so thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We already did community comments. Can we move on to consent agenda, Ms. Eisenberg?
Thank you, Madam President. Anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would like to pull 5.1B.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, moving forward. 5.1 minutes, be resolved at the Centennial School Board of School Directors. 5.1A approves the minutes from the February 9, 2021 work session, regular school board meeting. Can I get a...
Are we doing that, just that B first?
I was gonna say, don't we read up the all of five and then do what's one vote?
Well, I thought that we had...
We'll do 5.1B separately after we do the rest, usually.
Right.
Do all of five.
Do all of five, okay. Skipping 5.1B. 5.2 personnel, be resolved at the Centennial School Board, I'm sorry, School District Board of School Directors. 5.2A approves termination. 5.2B approves resignation. 5.2C approves authorization to employ. 5.2D approves leave of absence. 5.2E approves change of status. 5.2F approves co-curricular additions and deletions. 5.3, exceptions to policy, none. 5.4, appointments, none. 5.5, waivers, none. 5.6, conferences and travel, none. 5.7, bids and quotes, none. 5.8, assemblies, speakers, and programs, none. 5.9, contracts, licenses, and services, be resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors. 5.9A approves the 2021 Agreement for Services for an IEP student attending PA school for the deaf. 5.9B approves the contract with Action Karate Feasterville to provide martial arts character development to autistic support students at Klinga Middle School. The cost of $1,000 will be paid through a mini grant from Centennial Education Foundation. 5.9C approves a three-year contract with Zoom Video Communications. District cost not to exceed $6,209.70. 5.10, textbooks, be resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors. 5.10A approves the purchase of new titles for William Tennant High School's English courses. Selected for their high interest in diversity, district cost not to exceed $11,903.43. 5.11, acceptance of donations, grants, and bequests, be resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors. 5.11A accepts the 2021 Continuity of Education Equity Gear Grant. Amount of grants is $84,000. 5.12, changes to academic programs, positions, stipends, none.
I'll second.
Do you want, Patty, do you want roll call or do you want...
I actually have a question, if you don't mind. 5.10A, Mr. Gabriel, the books are being, the price of the books are being covered by a grant, correct? So shouldn't the wording of 5.10A not say cost to the district? Shouldn't it say cost to be paid out of the, cost of $11,000 to be paid out of ATSI grants?
It should.
Okay. Can I make a motion to amend that to reflect that it is from a grant, please? Do I have to make a motion for that? Ms. Robel?
You can.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we modify 5.10A to state that the price is being paid by a grant, not by the district. Can one second that?
Second.
Okay. So we need to vote on that motion first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstains? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we want to just a voice vote?
Yes, fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
I wrote no on 5.10, aye on the rest.
Okay. Abstentions? Seeing none? So that vote carries?
It's 9-0-0, except 5.10, which is...
5.10 would be, yeah.
8-1-0.
Thank you, Ms. Robel. Moving on. 5.1B. 5.1B, be resolved, the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the minutes from the February 23, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Second.
Mr. Oxon, you have...
So here's what I would like to... What I would like to do here is amend the minutes to reflect that Mr. Martin and Mr. Dixon participated in the executive session on the 23rd. And Mr. Martin was excluded from the meeting due to COVID conditions. And Mr. Dixon left due to emergency reason.
I'll second the amendment.
That's it. I have a question about that, which I have no prob, I mean, we weren't here. But is it necessary to specify the reasons that we were not here in the...
No, it is not.
So, I mean, I don't care so much for me. Mr. Martin, do you care?
I was excluded for out-of-state travel, had nothing to do with COVID.
Okay, so we can just put that they were not in attendance?
That's what it says, but I think Mr. Godikson wants to say that they were there for the executive session.
If someone's absent, we report they're absent, period.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the record, then, will just reflect that we were not present.
Which is what it reflects.
But we're present for executive meeting.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I think that's what Mr. Godikson wants to amend it to, to say that they were here for the executive sessions.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you meant that we should actually write into the record why.
Perfect. All right, so we need to take a vote on it?
Yeah.
Just a voice, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstains? Okay.
Now we can vote on the motion.
Okay.
To approve.
Oh, we have to vote on the motion to approve, yes.
Yeah, that was just to amend.
Yes.
Motion to approve minutes.
Yeah. Another voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstains? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're up to six? Be resolved that the, oh, anybody want to pull anything on six? There's only one item. We're good. Be resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1, approves a motion to remove from the table the adoption of Policy 000, Board Policy Procedure Administrative Regulations, which was tabled January 12, 2021, board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven. Anyone wish to pull anything on seven? Seeing none? Be resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 7.1, adopts Policy 000, Board Policy Procedure Administrative Regulations, as per the attached. 7.2 approves the title and job description for their position of communications and marketing specialist effective January 1, 2021, as per the attached.
Second.
What did I say?
It said January, so...
I thought I said July. I apologize.
I'll second that.
And just for discussion.
Discussion, any discussion?
No, Mr. Panofsky seconded it.
Okay.
To say I did one discussion on item 7.1. Now that it's down to three pages, I hope that all the board members do read it.
Okay, and a voice vote, all those in favor? Mrs. Brancato?
He wants us to read the policy because it's short now. That was all. It's Policy 0.
Wait, hold on a minute. So you're all over the map over here. So you're saying we're doing...
We're 7-1 and 7-2 right now.
Okay, 7-2. Is this a new position or is this a, we transferring these responsibilities to somebody that's already here?
As outlined in your weekly report and the documents attached to the agenda, this is an update to a current person's current job description and duties and their title. And a reclassification from a non-exempt to an exempt employee. That information was sent part of weekly report, and it's also a part of the agenda item information. So it is a current person. It's not a new position.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you. Passes 9-0. Policies, Mr. Panofsky?
We have four policies for initial distribution. Policy 007, which is Policy Manual Access. Policy 318, Staff Attendance. Policy 332, Working Periods. And Policy 803, School Calendars. A lot of it has to do with updating to take into effect new legislation and to standardize our policies with PSBA. They're fairly uncontroversial policies. If anyone have any questions?
Seeing none, let's move on. Finances, Mr. Birdnick?
Would anyone like anything pulled?
What do you have, sir?
9.1, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria fund budget reports, and general fund cash received summary, February 2021, as per the attached. 9.2 approves the 2021 budget transfers for February, as per the attached. 9.3 approves the pending bills list, as per the attached. And 9.4 approves the pre-approved bills list, as per the attached.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, can we get a voice vote, please?
Aye. Anyone else?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, no, thank you.
Board discussions and comments, anyone? District policy report, Mr. Panofsky?
Again, it's going to be very short. We continue to work to standardize our policies, to set them up to match with PSBA. Normally, we would have already had our Citizens Policy Committee meeting for the month. Unfortunately, it conflicted with the budget work session, so we will be holding that on tomorrow, I believe, at 6:00 PM, is that correct, Dr. Best? 6:00 PM. And we will be discussing policies to bring up at future meetings. And that is pretty much all I have.
Our BCIU, Ms. Eisenberg?
Thank you. We actually have our BCIU director meeting next week, so I'll be able to provide a report after that. Thank you.
PSBA, Mr. Panofsky?
Basically, I already mentioned contacting the legislature. PSBA came out with their yearly state of education in Pennsylvania. It's something good for all the school board directors to look at. One thing that was very interesting to me is, as of time of publication, I think it was only about 16% of school districts in the state were fully in person. And almost 50% were hybrid like we are, and the rest were fully virtual. So it seems like we fit right in with that median across the state of districts that are in a hybrid model. Otherwise, keep reaching out to your legislature, legislator. We get the daily emails. And I think otherwise, Mr. Miller will probably say anything else I would want to say in the Legislative Council.
Legislative Council.
I'm going to ask again for participation on Advocacy Day, March 22. Board members and key administrators, you know, if you can't spend the entire day, that's certainly understandable. But if you have a window of time that's available, please let me know and I'll make sure that it's used appropriately. Also, Mrs. Brancato is probably not going to believe this, but I have not missed a meeting of the NSBA for the annual conference. It is virtual again this year, and I am not finding enough there to suggest that we participate. So unless somebody does feel strongly that there's something they want to see there, I think we take a pass this year.
Could save a little money.
MBIT, Mr. Godikson?
Yes, we had our meeting last night. This was the longest meeting that I think we have attended, you know, at least I have attended at MBIT.
It was definitely...
MBIT has returned to our four-day schedule. They have approximately 700 students that's attending in person and about 95 that's still attending virtual. But the main focus that... that, you know, last night, you know, dealt with was the reorganization, and there were a number of community members, staff members, you know, at MBIT that spoke to this. And we eventually went into executive session, you know, to discuss it as well. There are currently two plans being proposed for the reorganization of MBIT's Business Administration ITM Department and the maintenance component of MBIT. MBIT has proposed two plans themselves, and they are then also in conversations with the Bucks County IU to have them present a plan. We eventually decided to create a needs assessment, you know, plan for all three areas that will, you know, be conducted by the IU. The other component that we talked about was the new special ed program, the Explorer Program at MBIT, and that has, you know, been approved by us. It will contain a one, one program with potential staff coming from or paid for through the districts, but hired staff member at MBIT. The last bit of facts is that MBIT built a house and have finished it, have had it up for auction, and it was bid on an accepted bid of $140,001. So that has been approved as well. The MBIT's authority had a resignation, and I believe Dr. Benton was contacted in regards to a potential person from the Centennial area becoming a new authority member, replacing a person retiring. That's it from my side.
It's just worth noting, the retirement is someone who'd served on the authority since 1965, so.
If I can just add...
Sure.
Of the two proposals that were presented, it's not necessarily a fact that we'll choose between one of those two, as other alternatives are being discussed through the month.
I have a question. Can you explain a little bit more clearly what the stakes were in this thing, like reorganization, like...
We have, so we have a number of high-level retirements happening this year, and so that gives us the opportunity to look at how we can fill those positions to best meet the needs of the students, as well as financially meet our stakeholders' needs. So we're...
You're talking about among the faculty or the administration?
Administration.
If I could go further from Mr. Dixon...
We're part of our finance director and the IT director.
So far, yes, have both.
And the purchasing manager.
He has not officially sent his letter.
But he's in his application yet.
Well, that's...
So we're just, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at replacing them as is. We're looking at consolidation. We're looking at outsourcing. We're looking at the IU not really outsourcing. We're looking at many possibilities in between those three. We're just trying to figure out, because we have this rare opportunity, what we can do.
Okay. Communication?
Mr. Dixon, if you recall, last year, it was our district that proposed that we look into this and possibly reorganizing MBIT a different way. And, you know, while it was discussed in executive session, it's also been discussed publicly, so it's not something we can't discuss at this table. What's happening at MBIT is an opportunity for us to put a plan into place where we can, I wouldn't, I don't call it outsourcing. I call it reallocating, because we're only talking with one possible vendor, and that vendor is the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, which serves the same districts that MBIT serves. So, you know, it makes, Bucks County Intermediate Unit already serves upper bucks. We have an opportunity now where we could share a resource, meaning one business manager that's already helping upper bucks, also helping middle bucks. And since upper bucks doesn't have a business manager, and we may lose our business manager, and lower bucks has a business manager, that might be an opportunity to explore. I'm sure, now, in the central part of the state, there's a situation where business managers are difficult to come by. You cannot listen to this, Mr. Greenwood, but what we're seeing happening there is something similar, where they're self-incorporating and serving rural or small districts, multiple rural or school districts, because it just doesn't make sense for a small entity to have the same cost of administration that a Centennial School District or even a Central Buck School District does. So something we're going to look at. And, you know, I believe that our districts should push hard for that, because it would recognize a significant saving for our taxpayers.
And I would say that it is getting late, and we will have more than one more opportunity to discuss this further, so.
Any more communications?
I just was curious.
No problem. Dr. Benton?
Madam President, just want to, and the board members, update you. We have been sending you copies of the communications to the staff. As you know, we at Bucks County had worked with Dr. Damsker. We had 19 approximately staff members vaccinated as the limited supply was available that he worked with, the superintendent's, to get done. As you know, last week, Monday and Tuesday, we were pulled into emergency meetings, and the governor went public with intent to do Johnson &amp; Johnson, dedicated vaccinations to school employees. Our allotment of the first roughly 96,000 came out to 5,082 slots. At the close of business today, they sent an update on the registrations for the slots. Our first administration of those new J&amp;J one-shot applications start tomorrow. There were only two IUs in the state that were used to kick this off. We're kind of the guinea pigs in the beta sites. The state model is the Bucks County model that was used, that they're trying to follow to just to do this fascination across the Commonwealth. You know, running from March 10th through March 17th, there was a heavy, heavy back and forth with the state to try to encourage those appointments to happen in the afternoon and evenings and weekends to avoid disruption to school, which accommodated, some adjustments were made. Staff, through conversations with the state and IU and others, are encouraged to find and sign up slots that minimize the disruption to the school day, and because, you know, obviously, we run into challenges when we're missing teachers. As of Monday, they have 100% of the slots already registered for, excuse me, as of Wednesday, the 10th, the 11th, 100%, the 12th, 100%, the 13th, 100%. And as you go farther out, it starts to decrease, but they will still be coming in. So at this point, 83% of the 5,082 slots have been signed up for, that are allocated to Bucks County. So we have a high percentage of our staff employees. We have started receiving also thank you notes from even support staff who are also a part of the vaccination process. So just wanted to make sure, and again, remind our staff, we receive notification, if you by some chance, when they were scrubbing a list, had to remove people who should not have signed up, if you get a cancellation for your second shot by mistake, for those who were in original 1900, I'm doing this from memory care, please ignore that. They were saying that may have been an error. You should show up for your appointment to get your second shot in the original 1900, employees who were registered in the first round of the process. Thank you.
Any additional communications? Any community comments? All right. Schedule of Board Meetings, Calendar Events, Mrs. Islandberg?
Tuesday, March 16, 7:00 PM, BCIU Board Meeting, location, BCIU. Wednesday, March 17, early dismissal in service day. Tuesday, March 23, 7:00 PM, Committee of the Whole School Board Meeting, location, right here in the boardroom. Friday, March 26, early dismissal, elementary conferences, secondary professional development. Friday, April 1, schools will be closed for students. Staff, teachers are pending, based on Dr. Benton's earlier report. So to be determined. Friday, April 2 through Monday, April 5, all schools and offices closed. Tuesday, April 6, 7:00 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, work regular meeting, right here in the boardroom.
Can I get him?
There we go.
Have a good evening.